Max, at Falmouth High School. Clipper time has helped me by giving me extra time to get help or finish work without having to stay after.
Thank you. The mission of the Falmouth Public Schools is to educate students so that they are engaged in their education in a way which develops their capacity to pursue their goals and foster lifelong learning. The three core beliefs which define us as a school system and enable us to accomplish our missions are: continuous improvement for students, teachers, staff and administrators, enthusiasm for teaching and learning, collaboration in teaching and learning. The role of the school committee is threefold: to write policy, to approve the operating budget, to hire the superintendent that supports her, and carrying out her initiatives for the school district. Public comment. If not, we'll go to a presentation. Highlight on education by Lawrence School, Mr. Bushy.
Thanks for having us. Welcome to Lawrence School.
Yes, thank you for your support.
This right here?
Yeah. A couple more slides. We are presenting briefly, I'm gonna talk briefly and the kids are gonna do a bulk of the presentation and I verify that that was okay with the superintendent. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about the advisory program. And Teagan?
What did I say?
What's that?
What did I say?
You said that it was okay if the kids did a bulk of the presentation.
I said.
You said you'd love to hear from the kids.
We love students.
Your words were more eloquent than mine. So, Teagan's gonna actually read, I think you have some of this language in your briefing, but she's gonna talk, just give a brief description of the program.
The Lawrence School Advisory Program was created to provide us students with the opportunity to develop meaningful relationships with our teachers and with each other. In advisory, we gain valuable academic as well as social and emotional support. Students and teachers meet daily in small groups to discuss various topics or issues affecting us students in the school committee.
So, we have a couple slides that are also in your packets. It's more important that you can look at them over in your packets because we wanna get to some of the insights that the kids have on what advisory's all about. But when we were talking with our students about why we do, what we do, I wanted to have them look at the slide and see that we don't just do it because it's a fun thing to get together and start our day on, even though that is true, but we also are keeping in mind the framework for student success and you can see for each of the strategic objectives, there are multiple components that our advisory program touches on. And then for our school success plan, you can also see that there's overarching objectives there as well and particularly around our students' sense of belonging, which you'll hear a lot about tonight, and also the promotion of our school model with an emphasis on compassion, which you also might, you might not hear that specific word, but you'll feel how the kids talking about how they feel welcome and safe in these advisory classes. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Ms. Lewis first.
So, advisory started three years ago with a pilot program. It was new to stack at Lawrence and so as a committee, we were looking at how to support teachers and students as we transitioned into this program. Advisory's 12 minutes at the beginning of the school day. Teachers have a lot of room to choose what they do with that time as long as they're focused on community building and students will fill you in with what they do on that time. We are supporting staff with ideas for what to do with an advisory website that Danielle and I created that's full of curriculum and ideas, a really wide-ranging band of ideas for how teachers can connect with their students so it doesn't require extra planning. And then also, this is replacing the former homeroom where basically there was attendance and announcements and people jumped into English or math. So, we're still putting announcements out to the school committee with an announcements page that is updated by all of the staff and shared with students each day. So, we're not missing out on the things that we're replacing with advisory. So, as Janice mentioned, we have, you know, this webpage and different kinds of resources that we share with teachers, but teachers really are encouraged to kind of create an organic relationship with their students in a way that makes sense for them. And so, some of the things that students, or that teachers rather have done, advisors have done is, for example, like Monday sometimes is check-in day. So, we give teachers a list of different kinds of questions that they can start their day with and you would go around the room and check, you know, have the students all answer that type of question as a kind of conversation builder, but also just a chance to see kind of how those kids are doing. Community discussions, things come up, you know, we talk about different issues that are happening in our community, in our school, or maybe in the greater, you know, national issues, who knows. Organization and study tips is in particular, particularly important, I think, in seventh grade, actually seventh grade, and, you know, students come in from sixth grade. Seven classes, so much change, so much transition. I think advisory is a really nice time for them to figure out, okay, what do I need? You know, do I have a pencil? Do I have my agenda? I mean, some of those sort of basic things that they really do need help just remembering and having a go-to person to help them with that. Games and team activities, you know, again, it's, you know, there's, kind of runs the gamut and the kids are gonna talk about different things that they do in advisory to do team building and community building. School-wide spirit events, which the kids will talk about. Monthly theme discussion, so we've kind of, you know, this has ebbed and flowed over the years, but, you know, perhaps one month is about respect or pride or compassion or diversity, tolerance, different kinds of things. And then Advisory Olympics, which is a fun, school-wide event that one of the kids will talk about too.
Some insights from the students that we learned when we were just talking with them in preparation of the presentation.
Advisory allows you to get into a school mindset where you, instead of jumping straight to a class, you can get ready for the day and make sure you have everything that you need and to be able to kind of just not be in that sort of rush to get to other class.
If you need time to get organized before class, you can do something relaxing, care in environment.
It's a great way to get to know and socialize with students who may not have interacted with in the first place or otherwise.
Advisory gives you time to get ready before your day starts. You can get your folders and stuff organized and you can grab a lawyer playbook if you forgot yours. If you need to, you can get academic help or advice with life in general from your advisor. Your advisory teacher is always there for you. They're an important trust development, everyday educational.
It's a good time to relax and sometimes we have all sorts of games, like in advisory we have, I imagine, our wing that does feedback toss. We have a pretty mediocre competition with the admin right next to us. We do connect pool games sometimes in between advisories and it's really relaxing, the games and all other fun stuff that we do, but it kind of, sometimes it may bring the competitive feel that sort of, it's not like you need to win, it's more of a sort of calm down and this, you can get ready for the day, we'll have fun and socialize with others.
Advisory Olympics. Advisory Olympics is like one of the advisories that we do. We do like obstacle courses or like pictionary that we play. It's a fun, it's like a fun way to, it's kind of like a good get-together, get to know other people, bond with other people, communicate, socialize, and get to know like what other people like to do. Fun.
The advisory activities we do, sometimes we do wool-hoop contests between other advisories or we have decorating contests. Last year, along with Ms. Cruz and the other students in our advisory, we ended up winning the fall hall decoration. So, we decorated our classroom as like a thankful theme for Thanksgiving, but doing these type of things allow you to like socialize with the people in your advisory. Because coming into, in seventh grade, in my advisory, I only knew one of the students and I'd grown up with her like my entire life, so it was nice to be able to have that, but also it was nice to be able to socialize with other students that I had never met before.
Can you help with?
Hallway bowling is one of the many fun activities we participate in advisory. It sort of epitomizes the things that we really learn such as a sense of community, bonding with our peers, socializing with people we might not have ordinarily socialized with, and supporting our classmates in this sort of caring, safe environment. We also, it involves competition, but it also, students were able to paint the bowling pins and involves creativity and fun activity.
So, you heard a lot of the insights that the kids have about advisory and ultimately they just feel like advisory gives them...
A sense of community when we play fun games and socialize with our peers.
It also gives us a consistent connection with a caring adult. Having Ms. Cruz last year, I always felt I could talk to her if I needed to.
And also, it's a smooth, it's a smooth start to the day, you know, like with, if you're having a hard time going to school, they ask you like, "How's your day? How was your weekend?" You know, just to make you feel happy, just to like, to prepare you like for when the bell rang and you gotta start your first period.
We are now happy to take any questions. Yeah. I was gonna say, can we clap? So, more than a question, one, I wanted to say thank you to everybody because that was great to hear your own words. I really appreciate you coming here tonight. Just last week was the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and School Superintendent's Conference and one of the themes that you would hear recurring was revolving around school culture and social, emotional learning and every time it kept coming around to this idea that you need to build relationships. And in fact, one of the sessions, you know, what they said was, "It begins with hello." And it was just very gratifying to see this presentation, to see how far ahead we are already in that and you literally are starting with hello the moment they're walking in the door and I'm very thankful about this. It was a computer presentation conference.
Well, they prepared this in about 15 minutes of combined rehearsal time, so I'm sure with more time they can talk before a much larger audience.
There are some, just as a side, there's some really great resources out there for advisory that I think, you know, there are a lot of schools in our state and other states that are creating even more like robust advisories. So, it's very inspirational, I think, to see. We went to a announced conference last year, New England League of Middle Schools and we saw some really, I think, impressive programs in other places too. So, we've, you know, we've definitely got room to grow, but grateful that we have the time that we have.
Mr. Bushy, how's your bowling?
My bowling?
Well, we're gonna find out.
The seventh graders won that match too. It was a lot of fun to see. If anyone wants to come in, eight fifteen to eight...
Twenty-seven and twenty-five.
Yep, just come by and you can walk through and they really do have their own unique personalities. I mean, Ms. Cahill will be making them sing, that's what she does and, you know, Mr. Porto will be going over the stuff in the shop. It's fun to see them all have their own different ways that they engage the kids.
How do you group them? How many groups? What are the numbers per group? And the groups change at all?
So, yeah, go ahead. We have fifty-some, about fifty-two, fifty-three advisories right now and so everybody except the nurse, the guidance staff, and the office staff are advisors, so all the special. Teachers are TAs paired up with certain advisories who are needing a little support. And students are in heterogeneous groups and I think in the seventh grade, there are ten to twelve students. Eighth grade's a little bigger this year, so some, I think they're up to fourteen as the biggest advisories. And that's been, the smaller we can get it, the better, but that's been pretty effective. And it is pretty randomly grouped, so there's, you know, it's heterogeneous, but, you know, pretty randomly grouped. Yeah, and students are generally on advisories with students who are also on the same team. So, all the teams, three students are mixed up, but they're all in advisories with other students who are on team three. Seems to be a good way to do it so far.
Excellent.
I'm just, I gotta applaud, I think just, we're really putting the students in a position to succeed and I see that just with every school, this real process of how can we best do that? And I think a big part of it is the ownership that they have of the program too as well. And the thing that I really like is the check-in question and I think that's a really powerful tool, especially with a pause after it. You know, you have that significant pause and if it's, the more generic the question is or the more just, even if you just went, "So," and then whatever direction the student takes it is really lets them know what's on his or her mind at that day, which is really, it's cool to do this whole thing.
Thank you. It's definitely complex work, but it's easy to work with the groups of kids that we have. We have really incredible kids in this town, as you know, and, you know, I mean, I think I speak for my whole staff in saying that we're proud to do the work every day. It's really, it's our pleasure and honor to do it.
Thank you.
And C, is there a motion, please?
I'd like a motion to act on policy A and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Open for discussion, please. Take the vote, please. All in favor? Aye. Aye? Opposed? Move to a presentation on policy D and E. I think you're on.
Enclosed in your packet, thank you by the way for that. Enclosed in your packet are the next two sections, the first of which is D, very slim collection of policies. So, again, we presented in the same format in which we presented the other areas. There's the overarching statement and the standing policies, so anything that we have not made any revision to, we might have just updated pronouns, things of that nature, are not included in the packet, they're listed here. And then in the next section, following the same statement about how we've gone about the revision and categorization process, there's a collection of revised policies. And in this case, we do not have any of the other sections for hold or eliminated. This is a small section, revision only, and those are all in the following pages. Then again, for section E presented on the white paper, you can see the same format, same presentation, however, in this case, slightly longer, there are new policies being introduced from the mask model language, eliminated policies in some cases because they appeared in multiple places and in some cases because they were outdated. And then finally, policies that are on hold for continued conversation, things on which we, as a policy subcommittee and district, are going to need to work.
I mean, I'll talk about it next time, but... So, if tomorrow night, or maybe tonight, miracle happens, and town meeting gets to the charter items, there is the potential that the language around the board is select and things like, like, there's a couple things that I think might impact this that we would need to...
So, anything that cross-references the town charter we've been holding on a list in the event that we have to go back. But I appreciate the reminder.
I think any place that we would just refer to the town versus a specific board.
Yeah, there's, in the budget it says something about the selectmen. I don't know that it's actually the selectmen anymore. I don't know.
Which one is that?
It's one of the budget ones, I don't know. I can look it up, but I'll send it to you.
Any other quick questions? Thank you. Okay, act on location change for overnight field trip to the Coral students. This will be from Nashville, Tennessee to the great state of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania.
So, just, you've already approved the trip? This is just a change in location?
Why are they checking?
No, they just, they found a festival that's in... Run to Hershey. There was a, they found a festival and then an opportunity for a coral clinic in Hershey. They thought it's not a spire distance and they thought that they could fit more in if they went to Pennsylvania post Tennessee, so they asked for a switch to that.
So, we're going to act on the switch from Nashville to Hershey, PA. Is there, is there a motion?
Our motion is in the pool.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
I have a comment actually. I had a chance to have a property that was managing down there in Mechanicsburg, in Harrisburg. It's a great, it's an underrated area and in addition to the Hershey, you know, the Hershey factory's an awesome, I actually sent Paige some suggestions. There's City Island, which is a really cool place to go and there's sort of an iconic bridge, a footbridge, walking bridge, it's like a mile, and it has metal grates that you can look down and see this Susquehanna River underneath it. And I, and actually, the Harrisburg senators are kicking off their season that weekend too, so if they have time. But that's only about five minutes from where those, where they're staying. So, there's a bunch of really cool things in addition to Hershey that wouldn't cost really any money, just the tours and whatnot. It's a beautiful year, just, I just thought I'd say that.
Thank you. Andrea.
I was wondering if there was any change to the cost, any go-back, look at the original one we received.
Paige did not indicate that it was going to be a lot less.
Less.
It's gonna be less, yep. So, less.
And that's positive.
Yes.
Okay, we need to vote, I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Act on declassifying executive session minutes. Can we group these? January ninth, 2018, January thirtieth, 2018, February thirteenth, 2018, February twenty-seventh, 2018, March sixth, 2018. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, no, Terry, go first.
I'll make a motion to accept these minutes for bringing to the public whatever is, declassify these five session minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just that, everyone noticed that, the actual dates, you can see there were a lot of them.
Yes.
Were edited for the February thirteenth, so that one's really white for when you're accepting them.
Okay. And I should mention those dates publicly as well, correct? We need to do that.
You need to mention all those dates. You want me to read them?
It's okay. Oh, but I think we should promptly read them if this is a public forum to declassify these.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
They were May eighteenth, 2016, June twenty-eighth, sixteen, August twenty-third of sixteen, September fifteenth of sixteen, September twenty-seventh of sixteen, October seventeenth of sixteen, October twentieth of sixteen, October twenty-fifth of sixteen, November seventeenth of sixteen, December seventh of sixteen, April twenty-fifth of seventeen, May ninth of seventeen, and July eleventh of seventeen.
And then the five we had already added.
Can we just clarify that that, those are minutes that we had proved to release back in February thirteenth of 2018. Those aren't part of this set. Those had been released.
Yeah.
I think that's a good point to make, those haven't been sitting around.
Thank you.
That's the actual correction from the one we did, is by adding the actual dates.
Yes.
Good correction, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Conduct routine business approved minutes of October twenty-second, 2019.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I will abstain. Superintendent's report, please.
Yes, so, on October twenty-third, we held our forum with the school council members of the schools. We had a turnout of a few parents that serve on the council members and some principals. And Mike Fuckoni had invited Dennis Delaney from Securly that was given a demonstration of content filtering and additional alerts that we can, to wear students on the internet where they may be going. So, how we left the session is that we are going to move forward with the content filtering. We have content filtering during the day. This was really because we're taking the devices home so that we have content filtering during the evening. So, we've started that section and we decided to hold on the next level, which is actually receiving alerts until we can understand it more, see some more demonstrations, hear some from other school districts that use that level. So, the content filtering will be turned on soon, so it's basically the same type of filtering within our own walls at, in the school that we get for the evening, so when the students are on the devices. So, that was the decision there and so there'll be, you'll hear more about that as we go along. On October twenty-fourth, we attended a leading with access and equity conference. It was, we divided up, there was, it was good conference, there was good sessions on equity, which is really one of our focus, and so we learned quite a bit. There'll be more on that because there's some activities we're gonna be doing that we learned and we'll share some of those as we move forward on those. October twenty-ninth, we hosted an MCAS celebration because of the great results that we shared here at school committee. We felt that the teachers needed to hear from us how proud we are. And so, but it was fun to have kids involved too. We had a small band that, from our high school, marching band that came and played for us and we also had our cheerleading team and that was fun. And then Jack and the Beanstalk, we had donuts for our teachers afterwards as a little treat. The, this week, as the, we recognize our school psychologists and we just, we know they're a very vital professionals to the school system and so we wanna recognize and so if you see a school psychologist, please thank them. For the preschool, we were reading, this is the annual jumpstart, read for the record that preschool does every year, and so this year we read Thank You Amu and I had the pleasure of being in Rochelle Miranda's preschool class and it was just so much fun. They're adorable. Food service department, I don't know how much you can see this picture, but this was such a cool thing that the Sandy the Lead at North Falmouth did and she wrote messages for the students on the bananas. So, you know, basically, "Great job, believe in yourself," you know, all these nice little messages and it was such a great thing, I just had to, had to share. So unique. So, anyway, congratulations Sandy, we appreciate, you know, everything that you do. And then there was a National Mathematics Honor Society induction ceremony, which was very nice and we had thirty-nine juniors and seniors inducted and I think that's incredible that we have that many students that qualified for the induction and interest. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Dr. Tellier. On Friday, she and Sarah Cox, our English department head, actually presented at the Mask Mask Conference and we're very pleased that they were honored by being selected and I heard fantastic reports back about how good the presentation was, so I just wanted to give a shout-out to Dr. Tellier and thank you for all you do.
And thank you, Mr. Murphy, our moderator.
To piggyback on that, like Andrea had mentioned, Andrea and I both happened to be in the session and it is amazing how far ahead we are in, in a lot of respects, but certainly in terms of trying to look at equity district-wise, people were stopping us afterward to ask about it and talk about it and how do you get a community to support you and how does the school committee support you? It was really, really nice. Felt really good to be in the room.
Those are great questions.
I also appreciated that, to be able to learn a little bit, because we hear a lot about how important equity is in our district and... about how important equity is in our district, and I think we understand that. But then to see the backside of that, to see how we're using data to inform what our practice, what we're doing, and just to see that connection and to know that that's being looked at, it got down to the very practical level. And so we often hear, kind of appear to hear that, you know, the behind-the-scenes bit was very informative. Thank you.
That's great.
On the theme of being ahead, I, we, our honor society, grade point average is more than what the national board requires. Okay? And I wonder if it's the same with the math honor society.
So interesting that you asked that question. I'm gonna add that question. We've been digging into all the honor societies. I'm gathering additional information, and I'm gonna add that to it, so we'll dig in with that. I'd like to present about all the honor societies, so that we can know a little bit more, as I'm still learning some of that myself. But I'm gonna add that question, because that's, that's a very good question, Terry. Thank you.
Yeah. I was, I always was amazed that we were three point five, and I, I forget what the national one is, but anyway.
Well, yeah, okay, we'll come back with you on that one, because that's good. We have more information. Not only at high school, but relevant into junior honor societies as well, that's here at Lawrence. So we'll be back with more information on that. I just wanted to point out, we're doing two anti-vaping parent forums again this year. November fourteenth at the high school, just reminding you of the flyer, and then November twenty-first is at Morris Pond. Doctor Spillane is again, coming back. He was a big hit, so we're gonna, having him back to give us updated information, things that we know more now since last year, and it's still a good focus area for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee member reports?
You're supposed to do these things.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Can I just go now, because I don't actually know? So just a reminder that December, I know it seems like a month away, but still, it's fast approaching, Thanksgiving. December eighth is the deadline for three observations to be submitted, which will be our halfway point for the year for Lori's evaluation. And I haven't gotten any yet. That doesn't mean that they haven't happened, I just don't have them yet. And I did send, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago, a couple of different opportunities that would make for really good observations, budget subcommittee, Lori's presentation tonight to town meeting would be one, the homework forum. I'm sure they're, what was that?
I'm doing that one.
Oh, good, great. And actually, Terry did a budget meeting, so just, just a plug. Don't wait till the last second.
So I'm new on the budget committee after all these years, and I was so impressed that it started out with the student success, and you go from there and all the things that happen. And there was a lot of equity and access and equity points made, which are gonna be noted in the thing that I handed to Kelly.
Any other reports?
Just a brief comment on the M.A.S.C. Mass Joint Conference that we attended, and you roped me into being a delegate.
That's what you get for listening to me.
Listening to me, and you go abroad, it's too...
Felicity.
Yeah, I can't. Whatever. But anyway, from my vast reservoir, semi-useless knowledge, and my opportunities many times to play with and without the helmet, actually, I enjoyed the delegation. I enjoyed the conversation on the resolutions. God knows where those resolutions will end up, but it was a very interesting several hours with that. Learned a lot, listened a lot, some great comments were made, and some very interesting things. I also think that there were several of us there at the conference for over three or four days, whatever it was, I lose track, driving back and forth, but there were some great, great presenters, some very interesting things, some things that I really enjoyed, and there were a few things that I wasn't sure what direction they were going. But I think overall, it was very, very interesting. So, you know, thank the school district for supporting us, the opportunity to go there and just kind of advance as a school committee and professionals as well. So thank you.
Did you, I think one time we did share some of the things we went to, didn't we? Was it last year? Did you want us to do some of that?
I think that would be good.
Something? I don't know, I learned a lot.
Yes, there were a lot of things that, you know, that were excellently done. Yes, John?
No, one thing, since we shared these other topics, I'm gonna share that I found it a very powerful presentation of transitioning for students that are in the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old bracket, and they're transitioning, and they had a very good presentation from both the town of Westboro and Lexington, and one where a young man opened a comic bookstore, and had himself, and he's a Down syndrome individual, and other kids that that had, some that had challenges, excuse me, a diagnosis, and some that were gen ed kids. And it was really quite cool. And then in the town of Westboro, that was more done by an individual parent that funded it. And then in the town of Westboro, it was more done by the school district, and having it more of a systematic thing of almost like a placement agency type thing, so it was pretty cool.
Any other comments? I think it would be probably good to take a few minutes of meaning and just kind of open that up for everybody to just make some comments. I hope it would be good.
Last year, we had all sent them in and had them compiled, and just had one person present it, so we could send them to town.
Okay. You're the first one that said we should do it. Well, we, I think it just seems a shame to have spent all that time, and now I'm the only person that learned about interest-based negotiation. You know, like, I feel like I should share that, if I even got the name right.
It could be a possibility to do that at our upcoming workshop. I don't know, you'll wanna take a few minutes there, but...
We should just talk to each other.
I don't think it would take long.
I know. But what?
That's a good point. I think we can do that.
Do it then.
Yeah, that would be excellent.
All right, so I'll get with you and talk with you. Is it, John, it was just you and Andrea and me and you? Is that right?
I think so.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, requests for follow-up information?
I have a request regarding the SNAP boxes. I was just curious when they will be going into the schools and what that process looks like, the timeline.
Also, in addition to looking at our variety of kids who do an excellent job and are involved with scholar, scholar, scholarly things, programs, I'd really like an update on our AP program. I was at the high school today, I have a group, a couple of those kids I see on a weekly basis, and there's a brochure and guidance that just overviewed Falmouth High School, course curriculum, a variety of things. And it mentioned the number of AP classes that are offered at Falmouth High School. And I did a double-take on that, and I found it very interesting. I thought it was exceptional, and it would be great to get a follow-up on those kids who take their APs, how they advance, and what our scores and statistics are. Another thumbs up on education, another thumbs up on excellence. John?
I was trying to find the right spot to bring this in, and you brought it in, it was a good spot with both the AP discussion. With the survey going out about homework, and I know we're doing different things with Clipper Time, and then just in general, but look, see, are we, are we, you know, it seems to always be inclined to think that we're giving too much homework or something, and how do we lessen the homework? That's the vibe I've gotten over the years. To tie it in, I would like to see kind of a part of this, any survey, address students that are AP students and honor students, because I would bet that they do, they spend a good amount of time on homework. So if, if on a general theory, we're saying, well, we're burdening these kids too much with homework, but then we have these AP classes, and I know anecdotally that a number of the kids that I know that were AP, are AP students, and over the past four or five years, they spend a lot of time on homework.
Yes, they do. They have to.
You know, so just, just ways that we can kind of incorporate that information into as well, to make sure that that is being factored into as well. Okay, the kids who are successful spend X amount of time. Do we want, you know, replicate that?
Okay. Good point. Thank you. Any other comments?
I just, another follow-up about the YMCA possibly and the timeframe, because I think there's some parents that are kind of struggling with after-school care right now, so there have been, people have reached out to me asking if we know, if we have a timeframe when they're gonna be available, so...
Anything else on follow-ups? Subcommittee report update? Everybody on the subcommittee reports?
I think I did it out of, on committee reports.
I think I did. Sorry. Oops.
Anyone else? Future items? Any announcements? We already made some announcements, so that's good. I'll leave you with a quote. Tomorrow is the most important thing in life. It comes to us at midnight, very clean. It's perfect when it arrives and puts us, and puts itself in our hands. It hopes we've learned something from yesterday. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Call call?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.